I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the school district of Bearable in order for Monday, May the 5th, 2014 with roll call. Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Mcnevin.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Vedro.
Here.
And Vodak here. Continue with the pledge. The flag's behind the counter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the last board meeting of April the 28th. So move. To approve.
Take.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes thus approved. Brings us to correspondence, of which I have none, and no other board member correspondence was presented to me. Any administrative correspondence?
I have one piece that I did not get into the board packets, and it's fairly short, so I'll read it to the board. It's from one of our high school teachers, Chris Labitz. Dear school board, this is a letter to the school board from Chris Labitz, Bearable High School math teacher and Cheryl Labitz, wife of Chris, who as some of you may know is a stroke survivor. We are appealing to you to please not raise the prescription co-pay again. We wanted you to put a name to this action and know what it means to one of the many under-year healthcare decisions. Cheryl, in order to function on a daily basis, must rely on 20 prescription drugs. None of these are optional, 20 daily. The cost at current co-pay rates is $2,000 per year, which we have incurred under our new healthcare agreement. The proposed increase would cost an additional $1,400 per year. The resulting annual pay from this little seeming inconsequential co-pay increase is very real and very consequential. We are asking you to please find another way to get the needed balance in healthcare insurance costs. This seems too disproportional of a burden to carry on one paycheck's back. Chris and Cheryl Labitz.
Thank you. Any other additional administrative correspondence? Hearing none, brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Public Viewpoints. I do have one person that signed up for Public Viewpoints tonight. I just want to comment on the disclaimer that's under Public Viewpoints. The intent was to explain to the public that the board cannot discuss and cannot act on items that are brought up in Public Viewpoints that are not on the agenda, and fortunately or unfortunately, that request for wording went through a legal process, and what you see in front of you was the result. It's not an attempt to prevent anybody from Public Viewpoints. We certainly encourage Public Viewpoints, and we will try to make some adjustments so that it doesn't look like it does on the agenda, but that's what we've got for tonight. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the rationale behind it, and we will change something moving forward so that it doesn't look so convoluted. That having been said, I do have Mr. Wiegand, who has signed up for Public Viewpoint, to discuss health insurance, so I would like to ask him to approach the microphone.
I will do my best not to be irrelevant, repetitive, abusive, or harassing.
Thank you.
My comments are really addressed towards item 8D, approval of health insurance changes, and I want to look at that from a couple different perspectives, actually. All I know as to what is proposed is what was in the paper today, and the paper indicated that the changes were being driven by the desire to maintain a 0% increase in health insurance rates. I would like the board to address during their discussion of the topic how much of that is mandated and how much of that is solely a policy budget decision of the board, because both have different implications in terms of your ability to change whatever actions you propose. The second thing I would point out, and this references a little bit Mr. Labitz's letter, you've got a lot of employees who in fact are taking home less money now than they were two years ago. To increase rates for co-pay or insurance participation, I think is grossly unfair, and I certainly hope you have had the opportunity to negotiate, well, you don't negotiate anymore, discuss that with the appropriate authorities among your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other Public Viewpoints? Any other Public Viewpoints? Any other Public Viewpoints? Hearing none, seeing none. I'd like to move on to staff and student recognition, which is always a highlight of our agenda, and we have our band director with us tonight and a few students. Is he here?
Not here, so maybe we'll move on.
All right. We'll adjust that if he returns or comes back. Brings us to reports, and under the reports, we have the facility referendum update, and we have with us tonight our cohorts from CG Schmidt and EUA. I don't know who wants to take the lead.
Do I need to stand at the microphone?
No.
I don't?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I'm comfortable here. Welcome again, Bob Biker from Epstein Union Architects. First off, congratulations on passing your referendum. Very excited. I was telling Martha, just walking into the room, I've been driving up here for a while, and I've come up usually in weather that's rainy or snowy, and today it's beautiful out, so I think the referendum hopefully shifted the weather from my drive out. So I wanted to just kind of congratulate you on that, and then also give you an update on our project team. Obviously, when a project passes, there's a lot more bodies that have to come on board to get the work done. So I've got a couple of my colleagues with me tonight as well. You've already met, I believe Bob Morris has been to a board meeting. Bob Morris has been doing a lot of the preliminary design work, and he will continue to do that. Eric Dufek, who you have met as well, is really the planner who helped Bob kind of envision what was happening. Mark Lewandowski, the senior project manager, is kind of the day-to-day person on the project coordinating the consultants and our internal team. And then I've got Sal Impelletary, who's our project architect, who basically gets everything to come together. So all of our drawings come together, all the consultants come together, he looks at the details. There's more people that we'll be adding as the project gets going, but these are kind of the core guys. They were actually up today, walking around, looking at things with our consultants, but I'm going to let Mark kind of walk through what he's already done, and he's also going to walk through a little bit of scope and project schedule. Any questions before we move on? Okay.
So I believe, Crystal, you forwarded the detailed schedule to most of the board members here, but this is kind of the overview on that schedule. It's kind of the upper part of that first page, and just wanted to just kind of take a look at the overall schedule. Obviously, we started basically April 21st. We had a kickoff meeting on that date in Madison with CG Schmidt and the core team, which was Dan, O'Brien, Crystal, and Martha in the office there. We had that kickoff, and then really the start of schematic design, and let me explain schematic design. You see that word up there, design development, and then construction documents. Schematic design is really the first stage of what an architect does to kind of transfer the official scope of the project to the construction manager. Essentially, we're just gathering up all the information that we know and putting it into both a drawing form and a written form so that everybody kind of understands the overall scope. We're not really getting into the details of the project quite yet, but making sure that everything is there. Design development kind of takes schematic design and really starts diving into some of the scope in a more detailed fashion. So we're developing, hence design development, we're taking the pieces and parts and really getting into some of the details so you really know what's going on in each area. And then construction documents even takes that further, where you're drawing the details that a contractor is going to use to actually build whatever we're building, whether it's an HVAC system or an electrical system, that really gets into the detail. So from the standpoint here, we got about from April 21st to June 23rd of schematic design, and then from June 23rd to August 18th is when we get to construction documents, and then October 14th is really when we're looking to start the bidding for most of the projects. Backing up, though, there are some summer projects, and I got that list up here, too. We do, we are looking at some of the smaller projects that don't need a lot of detail that could be done this summer, but most of the work on the referendum projects is going to happen next year, next summer, and some of the additions would start before summer, like at East, where we have a decent-sized library addition being added there. So there would be bidding in October 14th, and then we would get bids back somewhere mid-November, and then between December of this year and May, really, an important part to this project is making sure that all the shop drawings are done, the advance ordering of HVAC equipment, electrical equipment, anything that's needed for all these projects that need to take place next summer. Everything has to be there because a lot of work is going to happen within that summer. And then come August, the plan is to be complete and be done with all the referendum projects. So any questions on schedule? I think some of you might have seen this list in the past.
Would this be the most economic way to get everything done in one year, or was it more started out from two years ago? I mean, it works good for me to get it done at one time, but you're going to have enough people to get in there and get it done in one year, and they're not getting in the way of one another?
Yeah. CG Schmidt is confident with the fact that, like the addition, where we're putting on the additions, that's more than a three-month process. We would be, you know, getting the foundations in as early as possible. Hopefully, it wouldn't be a winter like this again, but the idea is to usually get in there anywhere from March 15th to April 1st and start digging your foundations right around that time. You get a head start on the addition, and then once you get working towards the building, that's when you break open any walls, once the kids are out. This schedule kind of gives you the least disruption at any school at this point, and if it makes sense to do anything earlier and that a school could accommodate disruption, I think that option is still out there, but...
So I would say, really, it's the schedule that we're on in the projects that we have, the additions. Typically, we've got to go through the design process, and that takes more than just a few weeks. We're only, what, six weeks away from school being out? So those additions will happen basically starting in spring and finish in '15. The work that we can do relatively quickly and easily this summer is what we're going to jump on and get done this summer.
Like roof projects?
Some of those, correct. Yep.
So some of these projects are the ones in blue here, so, and I believe you got this in your packets or emails to me, but like at Ave Recock and Ink Exterior, East, New Fensel on Jefferson Street, at the high school, replace the exit devices on the gym exit doors. Oh, two pews, okay. I don't know that. Sorry. I don't have a mouse. Replace the exit devices on the June exit doors. Truck point mortar and brick joints at the June south exterior wall of the high school here. Fill the cracks and seal coat the asshole at lot number two. The other lot that's being done is lot number one out in front here, and that's a lot bigger project than just seal coating. Replacing the burner and boiler number two. There's some recocking in the pool room, control joints, you know, just things that they don't need a lot of design. There's, you don't need a lot of things to order in advance for the project. Those are the types of things that we're looking at for the summer.
One question, and obviously, I'm looking at next summer when we get into the more significant projects like at East. Are we then going to have a timetable of where those things will be so that Molly and others can make those plans for whatever's not going to be done or will be done?
Yes. CG Schmidt will put together a detailed schedule of when they're going to start that, and typically what they're looking for with those additions is really kind of the weather, like Mark said.
Yeah.
It's dependent on can they get them to ground. If they can start in March, they'll start in March.
Sure.
But, you know, so hopefully, there'll be enough ahead-of-time information that will give kind of durations, and then we'll kind of shift that and see where it ends up, but there will be a detailed schedule on what needs to happen and...
And I'm sure they'll put up fences or protection when they put a hole in the ground in the playground?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. We do work all the time, I would say, unless if it's a brand-new school somewhere. But any additions? Typically, we do them when the buildings are occupied. And right, there's fencing, there's doors to prevent people from getting into additions, things like that. There's a lot of security and safety that's put into it.
Safety is always with any school project is pretty much number one. Coordination is, needs to happen on a regular basis. Usually, they're meeting with the principal. You know, things change throughout a project, too, even if it's the summer, and some of the buildings, you're going to have summer school going on, so that all has to be coordinated, too. But the good thing here is October and November, you know, the projects will be designed and bid, and there's going to be a lot of time for coordination and scheduling and working that out in advance, and that is a blessing on this schedule in particular.
So what you said, basically, whatever's in blue is what you're going to do in the summer.
Yeah, and that's fluid. It's not an absolute that everything there in blue, but that's, those are the things that we're targeting. I wouldn't say that every single thing on that list is going to make it, but we're definitely targeting it.
Any other questions?
I would say, just real quick, Mark had mentioned the kickoff meeting that we had. A lot of the things that you brought up, schedule, how does the building flow with students in it, those are key issues that we have already identified and started to talk about, so those are things that we are aware of and will be in discussions about throughout this process.
And one other, one other item, I think that all the principals got the email today from Crystal, but May 20th and May 21st, we are going to be meeting at each of the buildings those two days and meeting with the, in most cases, because we are doing the secure entryways and we're moving around the offices, we'll be meeting with office staff, but like at East, we'd be meeting with the IMC, anybody that has to do with that, any rooms that are affected, any staff members, those are the people that we're going to be meeting with those days.
And they've already received notice of that as well.
Yep.
And how are cost overruns or savings, possible savings handled?
Well, there aren't any cost overruns, and the savings are really whatever you would do with them.
Yeah.
As long as they fit within the language of the question.
Correct, yes.
Right.
Okay. There isn't anyone else?
And you'll see that we'll have periodic updates to the board, and we're really in the design phase right now, so...
Right. If I can just say it real quick. So Eric from CG Schmidt isn't here. A lot of the work that's being done right now is design, so you'll see more of us up front kind of in this process, once it gets into construction. CG Schmidt kind of takes over the lead in the process, and we kind of step back and, you know, maybe we'll miss a board meeting here or there, so that's kind of how the process works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, again.
Thank you.
Martha, in addition to these, the ones that are blue up there, the other projects, the roof projects from the other funding sources.
Yep, we have those four roof projects and a couple of the older ones.
Okay, moving on on the agenda, under Reports, B, Board of Education Committee Appointments. I sent out a draft, presented a draft to the board. The officers and the board recorder were dealt with effectively at the last board meeting. The only change in committee assignments, at least suggested committee assignments, is on personnel, where Ms. Riley will replace Mr. Vedro. So I'd like to read the committee assignments and then entertain a motion for the approval of those. Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee will be chaired by Mr. Cummings, committee members Mortimer and Vodak. The Finance Committee will be chaired by Mr. Mcnevin, with board members Cummings and Mortimer. The Personnel Committee would be chaired by Vodak, with board members Mcnevin and Riley, and the Policy and Educational Legislation Committee would be chaired by Mr. Mearing, with Ms. Riley and Mr. Vedro as the board members. Also, the CISA representative, Mr. Mearing, and the 2015 WASB Convention Delegate/Alternate, Mr. Mearing and Ms. Riley. Entertaining motion to accept that.
I'm going to approve the statement.
Unless anybody has any other suggestion. Having a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Mortimer. Any further discussion?
I would just like to make a point that one of the principles of organizing committees is to ensure the fact that board members have multiple experiences on various committees. I have sat on the Personnel Committee for a full term. I've also sat on Finance Committee, and when President Vodak asked if I would relinquish my position on personnel to Ms. Riley so that she could have that experience, I thought that was an excellent, excellent choice. For no other reason have I relinquished that position.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to continuous school improvement, of which we have technology highlights, technology education highlights from the past year, and looking forward, and...
I have a team here. They have their own.
We don't like talking into microphones either. You know, we're going to introduce ourselves here, and I think most of you know us, but we're in pretty exciting times here, too. It's really neat to see this referendum pass, and some neat things are going on. Of course, I've been around a while to notice a lot of evolution going on around here. That's the difference between 15 years and 29 that I've been here now, it's from year to year. So...
It's not getting any falser.
No. That's the only... My name is Mike McGann, and I teach the construction, one and two, building trades. I also teach engineering drafting class, and we all teach Intro to Technology Education, which is a class we started a couple of years ago because of some of the low points of some of our students' math. We do a lot of math in our area, so in this class, we cover a lot of measuring, scale reading, reading micrometer, those kind of things, and then they do various projects that kind of get the kids fired up about some of the other classes that we teach. So that's what I teach, and I've been here for, this is my 29th year.
I'm Mike Morion. I teach transportation and manufacturing. This is my 19th year. Manufacturing is very exciting. There's a lot of new potential jobs, and we've been getting a lot of community support lately, so there's lots of information to share with you tonight about some things that have been happening in manufacturing.
Ian Crammon. I'm the young guy on the block. I've been in here for nine years. I teach Video Pro 1 and 2, Communications 1 and 2. I teach the welding sections. I am Youth Apprenticeship Coordinator, and then I'm also the Skills USA Advisor for the high school chapter, and then I also am the chairperson for the Skills USA State Welding Contest.
Mark Vois, middle school pickup, 16 years in a year, and has to teach a little bit of everything, try to get the kids interested, and hopefully pursue their careers out of high school.
One thing I might mention, all three of these guys were student teachers of ours at earlier times, so they obviously all did a great job, and we're retiring, and we're pretty excited about having them. I wanted to just kind of talk about a few things, just so we can appreciate what's going on right now, but I was here long enough ago to remember Industrial Arts. Ed, you remember that one, Industrial Arts? It used to be called Dustral Arts. I was here with Harry Salutus and Elgin Belin and Don Hinker, if you remember those characters back then, and those, all those guys had a big hand in converting us over into technology education. In 1988, we started at the middle school, in '89 here, and we were one of the lead schools in the state of Wisconsin. A lot of people changed their names, but we were one of the schools that brought all of our curriculum and wrote all new curriculum for the main core areas, which are communications, construction, transportation, and manufacturing, and those areas. And so the idea was to broaden the kids' background. We probably go a little less detail into some of our things. For instance, we used to have a year of architectural drawing. Well, it's part of some classes now, but we're teaching other things, so kids either have a little more rounder base, and we're done. That was a great change, and I think it was Bearable and Rice Lake was another town, and Evansville was another, but we were one of the three in the state that were kind of the core leaders to that. One of the things we're going to talk about tonight is some of the community partnerships that we're making. We're making a lot of them. I think we've had a lot in our area. Through the years, we haven't been able to survive without community support, but I think the thing that's different now is that we're communicating better. You know, if you hear about it all the time, manufacturing right now is they're hurting for what I call qualified people. There's a lot of jobs open, but there's not a lot of people that are qualified to take those jobs, and it was an initiative that started a while ago. Last year, I'll tell you, it was probably about a year and a half ago or so, I was watching TV, and I saw Jason Sawe on TV. I used to wrestle with Jason, he was here ahead of me in high school, and he was talking about this fact that Lam was having such a tough time getting qualified people to go into the tech school, they're not even at the tech schools, and I will say, in that conversation, and I'm watching the news on Channel 15, I think it was, he even talked about the school side, maybe not even, you know, get kids ready to go, or make them help them understand what's out there, where they should be pursuing their careers, and I took a little part to that, and it was two days later, I called them and met with Todd Spencer, and we got together with all of them there. But I give Jason a lot of credit, because I don't know if this whole thing would have started without Jason putting it out there on the plate. Like you said, we've had partnerships, but now we're talking in between each other and all what their needs are, but what our needs are, what we can do for them, what they can do for us. We've done a little bit of that, but no, no our year like we're doing now, and that's within a year, we've done a lot of things. We're looking at starting a new Principles and Engineering class, which we'll talk about a little bit later. We've met several times, probably gotten larger than the last year than we have in the last 15 years, as far as utilizing these partners in our area, because a lot is going on, but we fully understand what is going on in our area, you know, and the lack of qualified people, and we're looking to help our community with that.
I'm very excited about what all is going on. We know that the transition from quote "manufacturing," which used to be blue collar and hands-on and valves and adjustments, has become high-tech. Anybody who goes in for automotive training or... Anybody who goes in for automotive training, or goes into a shop today, it's plug-in to a computer and do an assessment. I know people at Flambo, and I'm encouraged by the fact that we can bring our students onsite and have them see, not just hear about, but have them see the kind of technology that is required and the kind of understanding of systems and processes and structures that we're providing, so that they can move into our local community in high-paying jobs, well-qualified to do that, and I appreciate all the work that you were doing in that regard.
Well, and that's what it is. You know, these kids, I think after we've done some field trips and some things now, kids understand with a little training, they can really get someplace. And after seeing all the things they saw on our last field trip, I think they opened up their eyes quite a bit, but just what's it. I think for years, a lot of us have been driven by these buildings, not understanding what's going on inside of them. But our kids understand now, and that's gonna be something that's gonna continually happen. And we may not always go to the same businesses, but I think it's important our kids get out there and they see what's available out there. So I want to just mention a few key people. Todd Spencer, when we, after we had that clock, I give Todd a lot of credit for getting this thing going. He notified the mayor, he talked, I know he talked to Crystal, and he did some press releases and things like that, really got this thing going, to where we had a meeting, our first meeting with a bunch of manufacturers, and the mayor even comes in, and that was pretty neat to see, and by the time they got them going through our labs and we talked about some ideas, we were all pretty fired up, and we're real fired up right now. Some key people are Todd Spencer from Flambo, Landis-Rozak from Synergy, Auto 113 there, he did a great job, Bill Kennedy from Teal Plastics, and Andy Moon from Penton, and they're all in our advisor committee, they're all part of this grant that we tried to get passed, it didn't quite happen, but it was good effort, and we can resumet that, but.
Just broke the news for everybody.
It's not news. They don't know, so I just let them know.
No, I would just add, yeah, we've worked with all those collaborators on a Wisconsin Fast Forward Grant. We went for $150,000, which was ambitious, and our partners are willing to match in kind, and we received news today that we didn't receive the grant, however, we were encouraged to resumet, so we will.
Can you give the positives of the work with those partners, even without that grant?
Absolutely. I talked to all of our partners this morning and shared the news, and I think it was Bill from Teal that asked, "What does this really mean?" I said, "All it means is my self-esteem is hurt today." But we're gonna continue moving forward, so, and they're willing to collaborate and help us with equipment needs and things like that.
Absolutely. So good for our partner.
We'll let you ask some more questions, but I think we'll go to Mark Weiss, who's gonna be next, he's talking a little bit about our middle school programs and changes that are going on there.
I guess one of the biggest things next year is the sixth graders are gonna be required to take my class, so all sixth graders will be able to take tech ads in middle school. Some of the, I guess, key things that are gonna happen next year are some equipment upgrades, which is extremely exciting to me. One of the first ones is SolidWorks, which is a computer software, and it's a software that a lot of businesses around here use. Flambo uses it, Synergy uses it.
Milwaukee Bell.
Milwaukee Bell uses it. So we're trying to get equipment in, get software in that most businesses use, and get these kids at least interested in it. Along with SolidWorks, SolidWorks does 3D modeling. The program is huge, and it can do animations, it can do heat transfer for their plastic molds, it's a really cool program. The second thing is we're getting some 3D printers. A 3D printer is, they can take that 3D model from the computer and pretty much hit print, and it prints out that part. And 3D printing is known as additive manufacturing.
And a 3D printer that parts, an actual Mylar part.
Yeah, plastic part. And then the third thing is a CNC router. The high school has one, and I'm gonna get relatively the same thing, but we're gonna try to grow them from, you know, just basic at the middle school, to a little more advanced at the high school. The CNC router is kind of the opposite of the 3D printer, in which you put a piece of material in, and it subtractively manufactures a part, so it takes away the material, so that's the exciting news for the middle school for next year.
Are there any other businesses in town that have 3D printers?
Flambo has multiple, and that, when I talked to Todd Spencer, he was, that was one of the first pieces of equipment that he suggested that I get.
Could you put a sixth grader in and decompose, destructure them, and then restructure them?
In plastic.
Technology.
But, I mean, again, I mean, I know there are other places in the state, other schools in the state that are doing it, and then students are actually selling the products, so I mean, again, that would be something where not only they're creating something, but something that could be actually utilized.
Personally, all of Flambo's prototypes are done on a 3D printer. And definitely, like you said, there might be four parts to it, and they'll make all separate parts and all of them together, and it's just really neat to see, and the big thing is to show their client, because they're having a hard time visualizing what this is. A lot of what we do, and we've been doing this for a while, is going from computer to machine.
Sure.
So we're doing a lot of that, this is even more of that, and it's directly, it's all their industry, so it's kind of a neat thing. We also are gonna do the 3D printer, and you're here too, so.
Yeah, let's talk a little bit about our numbers. Normally, the school's having about 350 students a year. This year we have 700. Next year we have 800. Okay, so just gives you how many more kids are getting exposed to the tech ed area. What I do is I teach the manufacturing, things we've done. Tom Bowers is one of the, he works at Flambo, he came in, spent two hours with me, with my manufacturing kids, as we're working with some new equipment we had done, and in 15 minutes, I learned more about plastic molding than I ever know. It's really good to talk to people that actually work with it every day. I was like, wow, I never knew that. I've listened to it, never worked so good with it. So it's phenomenal. And we have a extruder that's being remanufactured by Steve Schech from Teal, and that was here since 1989.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, ninety, that's getting remanufactured, so that'll be upgraded. Along with that, I got a Carl Perkins grant last year, we use a lot for upgrading some of my labs that haven't been upgraded since 1988, and it's hydraulic pneumatic trainers, electronics, electricity, and we had the labs all set up in my class, and we were fortunate to go to Flambo Plastics, and we toured to their technology building, and one of my students, and I go, he goes, "Well, Mr. Rand, this looks like your classroom." I go, "Yeah." I go, "This is what we do." So it's really encouraging to have the kids see that the stuff that we do in the classroom is what they're actually doing out there, and that knowledge will help them with that, so we're really pumped up about this. Is it a new class? Want me to talk about that too?
Sure.
Okay. So, a new course is being introduced, it's a pre-engineering course. I'm probably gonna be ending up getting to do that. It's gonna be a team talk course, where they're gonna have, Mr. Loxie is the physics teacher, he's gonna teach one part of it, and then I'm gonna be, they talk with an idea and I make it happen, so I'll be the one making the components. We have a couple of different ideas that we've, I've been looking at, doing a high model vehicle, or an electronics on car where there's competitions, where you can make a car to get the best gas mileage, or go with a furnace on a certain charge from a single battery, and things like that, so it's application of engineering, is what we're gonna be doing in that course, so.
And I think some of that curriculum will end up being, after Todd Spencer and all these gentlemen I mentioned, they're gonna be on an advisory, we're gonna get together and write curriculum with them, so some of it's just directly related to what they're doing, and, you know, that's what we wanna do with it. So some of that, we're even thinking about making some of the robotic arms that Flambo might have, you grab a part here and put it in a bin here, and help design those, but so it's gonna be neat, it's gonna be neat. We're gonna be working with our partners a lot more than we have been in the past.
The final culmination, I guess you could say, of all of these classes together would be a youth apprenticeship or a co-op type opportunity. I oversee the youth apprenticeship students, and Mike oversees all of our co-op students, and between the two of us combined this year, we have about 35 students that are out at various places throughout the entire community, and a couple of them are at some of these manufacturing, or will be at these manufacturing locations in the near future, so we've developed the opportunity to get these kids out and actually getting dirty, and getting in the real world, and seeing how these applications we do in class apply in to the job that they do on a daily basis. So we've got quite an opportunity for some of these students, that they'll take Manufacturing One and Manufacturing Two, welding and basic shielded class, and then they'll be able to go work with Landis, and fabricate cattle chutes that are being sent all over the world for hoof trimming, or they'll be able to make parts over at Flambo, or make surgical parts at Teal, so they'll be able, you know, step by step to get their way worked up, and after, you know, graduating, they'll have a pretty good opportunity of getting their foot in the door for a pretty lucrative career. I know that a number of the people that are retiring from some of these places now have been there since, you know, they turned 18 and went to work on the factory floor to work their way up, and so it's, there's some great opportunities that we have through all of these areas in our department, so.
Can you explain the difference between a co-op student and apprenticeship student?
A youth apprenticeship is guided by the Department of Workforce Development, and they have more specifics as far as competencies that each student must complete in a specific area. For example, we have one student right now that's working for the Tech Services Department, and he has specific competencies that he's gotta get through to say that he's proficient in doing this. Mike requires that similar idea in a specific area, like an ag co-op or in a tech ed co-op. They get the job-seeking skills, the job, you know, keeping skills, and then, you know, moving onward in their life to a different type of position, either a different company or whatever it may be. Basically, the main difference in it is that the Department of Workforce Development has more stringent competencies with the youth apprenticeship program, and they get a certificate and a little asterisk on their graduation diploma versus the co-op, which are both, you know, outstanding programs that we've really taken a lot of pride in overseeing, and plus, it's fun for Mike and I to be able to go out and see the kids in their jobs, working and interacting, because Mike's able to get into schools and see them interacting with various students, and I've got them in different community, or they're selling stuff in the Dells at Nike, or they're working down at Lloyd Walker in the accounting firm, or I've got one here at the high school in IT, so it's pretty interesting to see them out there working, doing real-world tasks and getting high school credit for it.
I think it's the co-ops and the youth apprenticeship, maybe the best partnerships we have. We have so many of our students or alumni working in places. We went to Synergy on that field trip, and there was three or four of our past students working in there. But they get their foot in the door, they learn the trades, and it's just kind of satisfying to see that, but it's also, we get our foot in the door, maybe get that expertise, and can ask for this and that, and it really works out pretty well, but the co-op, and one thing I would say about the co-op, it's probably a little bit easier to get in the door, because there isn't quite as many hoops you gotta jump through, but please understand that these, we don't just send any student out, they have to be approved by the area. I cover all the co-ops, but for instance, if it's an ag co-op, Jen has to, the ag department has to approve of them, so that means their attendance is decent. Getting a rock egg out there is kind of tough on a co-op program, it's gonna be hard to get another co-op person there, so if somebody's had access problems or anything like that, and they gotta have a career objective. It's not to get a job to pay for your car, any old job. We want you to find out about something you're interested in, to see if you like it or not, and so, and that's worked out pretty good. It took us a while to weed out some of those, but it is just a little bit easier to get in the door, and as you said, you're probably looking at more certificate side with the youth apprenticeship, and not so much certificate on the co-op side, although some of our kids do a good job, we're looking at trying to get them certified there and there you do on the co-op, so.
One thing, and one thing I wanted to make sure is that the board members knew that on May 21st, we're gonna do a learning drive, we call it, with our business leaders and our teachers, and any of you are welcome to share an interest if you'd like to join us, and that'll be May 21st, we're gonna go and see the Stoughton Fab Lab, and we thought Stoughton would be a great place for us to start, and we might venture around to Bradley Tech for a different date. Why do you think your numbers have doubled in more than?
The block schedule has a lot to do with it. With no study halls, and I tell you, the thing I always mention is, it makes me wonder how many kids wanted to take tech ed before, just with their old schedule, but, and we love the block, we love the block. For instance, my building trades kids start at 7:45, and they're out there till 11:30, not tearing down, and we go one different class every other day. There's two classes of building trades that are there every other day, but they're here for that three and a half hour stint instead of an hour and a half, it's much more efficient for our lab setting. But, yeah, that has a lot to do with the numbers, and I don't know if they mentioned it, but we didn't have any staff, so we're a little tired up here.
Right. And that's what I was saying, these guys are really dedicated to these programs and their areas of expertise, and, you know, we started talking about staffing, they said, "No, let us handle this transition," you know, but we do need to look at staffing. I do believe with the expanded opportunities that kids are going to have, those quality experiences, we're gonna see more interest, and with the expanding support from our community, with our business partners as well. And, you know, all of this equipment is wonderful, but they need adequate space to put it in as well. We, you know, we got to tour the areas and dirt with the advisory committee, and they gotta tear down, they gotta push things aside, and so, you know, we could offer even more if we took a look at that space, and I think with our master facility planning, we need to keep that in the back of our minds, and maybe in the front of our minds, that that's a high priority area for the district to make sure that we have adequate space, staffing, and equipment.
Yeah, Dr. Ritzenthaler and I were both at a meeting just about a week or so ago with Betsy, Bearaboo Economic Development Corporation. I always, Betsy, I'm trying to get the acronym correct, and this is something they're looking for, the leaders and economic leaders, and obviously you're in contact with those people, are really looking to that, and you're right, around the state, it's an issue, and if we can address that issue, it'll be a growth factor for not just our students, but our community as a whole, and so that certainly is something that we need to look at, and when we do our strategic planning process next year, as we bring other people into this, it's going to be a critical thing that we need to address, so, thank you for all that you're doing.
And I don't wanna say it's, you know, we're busier now, but it's exciting busy, the days fly by, and, you know, it's fun, it's fun being here and doing both these new things, and to know these, the community members better, this is happening, so, and we thank you for inviting us also.
You'll have to forgive me in closing comment, because I would like some of our citizens to understand that this incredible work that you're doing, which requires incredible partnerships and incredible funding from our state and our legislature, has just not given us a grant to continue this work, and further has cut budgets to education, even while there's a workforce committee that's supposedly trying to enhance employment in our state. So there's a disconnect between all of the great work that's being done on the local level and our priorities with funding, and that should be pointed out, because we have to provide the space for you, and we have to provide more faculty to enhance this 800 growth, and we can't do it alone. We have to have the funding come from the state, and that is something our citizens need to understand, so that we can help expand this good work.
Thank you, guys. They've been wonderful. And just one more important collaborator out in the audience is Mr. Loxie, because he's been joining in with their efforts to help with that engineering course, I just wanna recognize that.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Personnel Recommendations. I am aware of any actions to be taken on resignations. Under B, the approval of new hires, there is a change on number two, which is the High School Family and Consumer Education Position. Ashley Persnick, that name changed to Patricia Fonta. So that having been said, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the Reading Specialist, 40%, which is to cover the parochial schools, and that is Carla Cross.
I move to approve Carla.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Vedro, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? Carrie brings us to number two, and for that, I'm going to turn to Dr. Ritzenthaler for a little update on where we're at.
Well, the reason you had this so late is because we were waiting for confirmation that the candidate would accept the position, and Glenn received that confirmation about 5 o'clock or something. So we really wanted to act on this tonight, not postpone it, because I know there's a great deal of community interest and interest from our staff to know that we've found a candidate for this position. You can see from the recommendation, this candidate does not have any experience outside of student teaching, but in talking with the staff that we have here, we're confident that we can provide the support this person needs to be successful and to have a successful program. So we would like to recommend Patricia Fonta at the beginning salary of 37.
And this is 100% time?
Yes, it would be. And Kate gave some of the overload from Don Hoover, and clearly because...
Because Kate was not 100%.
Right, right.
She was 23. She was 23.
But with, again, with our enrollments and with the overloads, we're really taxing the other two teachers, so they're much appreciative of increasing that. And when we figured out the calculations, you know, it's pretty much a wash. It's even a savings to have somebody at full-time as opposed to the two overloads.
It's another way to build in support for her, too, when she can come back to the building every day and work the fourth block, or be here even longer than that, and then be able to collaborate with the other two teachers in the Family and Consumer Education Department. So that will be important, to provide you that type of support ongoing, so she can come back and learn from it.
Given, given a new teacher, and given all, I'm sorry. Initially. Thank you. Given whatever it was Mo said, and the interest, and that was expressed at our last board meeting by all of the proponents of the program. You know, my biggest concern is that the reach to support this candidate was as wide in the interview process and the embracing process as the concerns to continue the program were made at the last board meeting. And if, if the chairs and the heads and the other professionals in the program are supportive, then I certainly feel this is the right direction.
And I did have a conversation today, too, with the other food service teacher, and, you know, her interest is really to remain in her position here at the high school, that she's, you know, going to support that new individual 100%.
A lot of mentoring is going to be needed, mentoring.
Is there any motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, Carrie. Thank you to all of you, to get us to tonight. I'm not aware of any approval of long-term substitute positions, so that brings us to New Business. And the first item on New Business is approval of the distortions, and for that, I will turn to the Chair of Finance, Mr. McDevon.
Oh, I see that we've all got the copy of the bills. I make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $519,963.3.
And I will second that.
Make a motion by McDevon, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion?
I have one question. Are the John Goodell to help me? Where's, or what is Cherrydale Farms?
Cherrydale Farms is a fundraising company.
Oh, so it's not a farm?
It's not a farm.
They raise something. Money out.
A student council fundraiser.
Okay.
Any further questions? Discussion? Hearing none, having a motion in a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, Carrie, brings us to the approval of an out-of-state trip for the high school physics to Six Flags with Mr. Loxie, that's coming up at the end of May. Any motion for that approval?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Bedrow, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, Carrie, brings us to the approval of the custodial supply bid. And that is coming from Mr. O'Brien. As far as presentation, I would entertain a motion for that. Any further discussion?
So move.
Motion. And the second, motion by Bedrow, seconded by Riley. Any discussion?
My only concern, is this a local company, or is this a company that we've worked with before? Are we continuing a relationship?
We'll still continue a relationship with our other vendors. Lee Mark is in the area. We haven't done a lot of work with him yet, but he's really in the presentation. They have 85% of the supplies that we handle, so overall, there's some products that will still continue with, like Nassau and San Diego and whatnot.
But they're basically a community member, a larger community member. We're supporting economic development for our community.
Well, you're not, you're not like located in Bearable?
Correct.
Not at Walmart.
Right. But I noticed, you know, I noticed Staples as an example, you know, a big box company, and I wanted to support the idea that we're not taking the lowest bid, we're taking a bid that involves workers who are more in our community, our larger community.
Further discussion? Hearing none, having a motion in a second. Would you be correct?
Yes.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, Carrie, brings us to, indeed, approval of the health insurance changes. And for that discussion, I will turn to Board Number, Mr. McDevon, and at this time, Mr. Mortimer and Mr. Cummings may wish to exit. Being that there is nothing actionable on the agenda after this, I guess if you guys want to leave, not that you need my...
They're already in the car. They already are in the parking lot?
They did wait.
And the reason, the reason for Mr. Cummings and Mr. Mortimer leaving the meeting is because they have also interest in the insurance, as their spouses are taking insurance in their district. So with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. McDevon for a brief PowerPoint.
Brief, two slides.
I guess I have been elected to bring you up to see the health insurance discussions today. There is no action to be taken tonight. This is to consolidate all the conversations that have taken place, all the dialogue, and present it to you for review. And I'm, I guess, the representative member of the Insurance Committee, something that I can relinquish at any time and give somebody else the experience to serve, should they find themselves with some spare time, Mr. Bedrow.
He needs, yeah.
All joking aside, the conversation about health insurance and the steps that get taken anytime is a very personal conversation. It is a very personal benefit to those that use it. It is very personal in that it is, directly deals with their pocketbook and their take-home pay. It is also a conversation that deals with their healthcare provider. And money in healthcare doesn't get more important to most people than that. So, to be sensitive of that, we took a look at the Insurance Committee, and we had a makeup of a committee that included a board member. It included maintenance staff, support staff, secretarial, teachers, a couple administrators thrown in the mix, and some support from Dan Lewis with Don Rec Insurance. And we took a look at, what can we do? The question that Jean had asked is, you know, what is the driver in the health insurance discussion? And the answer is, it's a board policy. Right now, the school district is looking at finishing this year in a deficit, and it's a substantial deficit, several hundred thousand dollars, that we're going to have to dip into our fund balance to make this budget work. Because of that, we don't have the opportunity to pay more for goods and services in the upcoming year. Health insurance represents $5.6 million of expenditure. That's, that's the employee and the district combined. You spend $5.6 million of our $31 million budget on this one benefit. And so while the discussion with employees about the benefit is very personal, the board discussion is about purchasing a service or a benefit to provide to our employees, and what can we get for the dollars we have allocated for it. The Insurance Committee asked for a direction, and the board came back and said, we can't afford anymore. We can't afford to add on, so we're looking at no more additional increase in costs with this benefit moving forward. With that in mind, I want to give you a little bit of demographics, so it helps frame the conversation that we've been having. We have two plans available. One is an HMO PPO. That's where you are involved in the Dean Network. You use Dean services, doctors, specialists, and you stay within that network. There's a second Point of Service Plan that allows you to go anywhere based on buying this insurance coverage. Now, as you see, we have 355 insured units, I call them. But they're, sometimes they're singles, sometimes they're families, sometimes there's...
But they're all carbon units.
Right. 270, or 76%, choose the Point of Service, okay? And the reason why they choose the Point of Service is because it gives you the most flexibility, and there's very little cost difference between the HMO and the Point of Service Plan out of pocket. It's about $15. So the employee portion to choose to go wherever they want is about a $15 increase. It's the best bargain you can get. If you ask the insurance agent, which one would you take? He'll tell you, take the Point of Service, because you just never know. But here's the reality. 81% of our claims are paid through the Dean Network. So 76% are choosing to be able to go outside of the network, but 81% stay in the network. And that's because Dean has got the entire area wrapped up in its care facilities. So what are you finding? That the board had the mandate of a 0% increase in healthcare expenditures, and we said, what can we do to make that happen? Okay? And the committee had a lot of discussions. We talked about deductibles, and we talked about co-pays, and we talked about office visit expenses, and we talked about co-insurance clauses, and adding on a rider like the state with 10%, and a lot of different roads you can go down, okay? But we narrowed it down to a basic solution, and that is, our current plan has a deductible of $100 a year for a single $200 family, and here's the co-pays, 52535. That's generic, this is...
Name brand.
Name brand, and then this is...
Specials.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. So generic, name brand, and then specialty drugs. And, you know, when you run into a situation like Cheryl Scott, you know, you're hitting the top tier. New deductible, looking at a different plan of going from 100, 200 to 200, 400, and to increase the co-pays from 52535 to 103050. One of the reasons why we looked at this option is because that actually has the people that are using the plan, supporting the plan, and paying for the increase in the cost of those plans. There are a lot of people, there's a substantial amount of people, that don't use the plan at all, okay? So this has less of an impact on them when you make these kind of changes. Well, when this proposal came out, we said, what does, what does this look like if we did this? Comes up to a 0% increase. Dean comes and says, if you make the simple steps of changing the deductible from 100, 200 to 200, 400, and you make the changes in the prescription drug, we can give you a flat-line increase, okay? There's three caveats that come along with that. Three elements that we talked about that we would like to see incorporated in this contract moving forward. Right now, we'd like to see the district peg its 88% contribution to the HMO rate. What does that mean? Well, we pay 88% of the premium, and right now, we pay 88% of whatever premium you choose, okay? But now, remember back, when we looked at, when we looked at the key number, 76% of the people choose the more expensive plan because it's $15 out of your pocket, but 81% of them don't use it. They stay in the Dean Network. We are buying a benefit that people are not using. So we are expending lots and lots of money on a benefit that is not getting utilized to the extent of what we are buying. So when you look to peg to the HMO rate, it changes the contribution. It makes the employees say, wait a minute, am I going to go with the HMO route, or am I going to go with the Point of Service route? Because now, it's a choice. The Point of Service allows you to go anywhere, and that costs me to do that now. Instead of $15 a month, you'll see what the expenditure will be. So element one, peg our contribution to the lower rate. Element number two, July 1 renewal. This comes from staff. We tried, the January 1 renewal, we tried to match up our health insurance program with the flex plan spending, because then it, then it matches up. The problem is, it's just a mess, right? And this works out better July 1, because you've got, it hits in the summer, it's better for budgeting, we understand our numbers, they're not switching in the middle of the year on us, and then all the new teachers that come on board, we're ready to rock and roll. When we switch, if we switch, Dean has agreed that all deductibles incurred will carry forward. So if you've met your deductible, it'll carry forward. Essentially, it's an 18-month lock on your health insurance costs. Element number three, we have to build a wellness plan together. Long-term, controlling healthcare costs long-term is all about education. It's what we're really good at. But we have to educate ourselves on what are the cost drivers within our healthcare costs, and those health drivers are the expenditures. And what are we, what are we using it for? How can we have earlier intervention and build a wellness plan that will reduce our long-term exposure, will reduce our long-term expenses, and will build the benefit of the employees being healthier, heavier? And it is the one thing that we can do, that we can do, that can control our costs. But this is a little nebulous. We have to build it together, okay? Dean's got some ideas, we've got some ideas. What are, what is the wellness plan? One of the things that's critical in wellness plans is the...
Health risk assessments.
The health risk assessments. We had 150 take advantage of the health risk assessment. Online wasn't the best option, I was told. They're working at solving that, making it a little better. But when our employees take that health risk assessment, that's personal information between them and Dean, and it gives Dean a snapshot as to what they're looking at for the group. It does allow them early intervention in some people that weren't aware of a condition. The district does get some feedback on that, but it's as an entire group. Maybe it tells us that we have to look at hypertension as a group, or maybe it tells us we have to look at diabetes as a group. But it certainly isn't any personal information that we would know about.
Sean, importantly, though, too, Dean's paying 150 bucks per staff member to do that. So there's a role in the process as well.
And that's how important it is to them. They're willing to step up and make those kind of contributions. Oh, we do that, and they said, if we can do that, they want to take a look at a long-term approach. They are willing to hold costs, 0% increase this year, and a max increase in premiums, a maximum of 5% year two, 5% year three. And in the health game, I've never heard of anything like this come along. It's normally just sit and get, and you take whatever they come along with renewal, and say, here it is. For us to be able to monitor our costs and measure our costs budgeting-wise, this is invaluable. It's not to say that that 5% number is going to be guaranteed. It is possible that it can come in less than that. It's not to say that, but the next thing is, our experience doesn't matter in year two or three. You can have some outliers that really drive your experience rates up, and when that comes time for renewal, you see that reflected in the premium. time for renewal, you see that reflected in the premium. That won't matter when we've got a three-year lock essentially on our exposure. The point of service rates, just as a note, the point of service rates will not be subject to this rate lock because they cannot manage those costs or control those costs as an insurer when they're not the ones driving the costs. So this, the point of service premiums do have a rate lock. What does all this mean? Well, this is, this is what it's looking at now as far as current and proposed monthly premiums. They're the same as they are now. The proposed monthly share is right here, and this is proposed pegging off of that HMO rate. And to give you, what does it mean in dollars and cents to the employees? If you have a family and you are on the HMO plan, it's $179 a month out of your pocket. That's the 12% share, okay? If you choose to stay with the point of service or purchase the point of service, that out-of-pocket contribution is not $179 a month, it's $299 a month or $120 a month more. And what is that going to do? That's going to flip the balance. Instead of 76% of our employees purchasing a benefit that isn't being utilized to the full extent, it will flip that so that 76% of them will probably go into the HMO route because it's $120 a month savings or difference.
But we did still have quite a few employees who after used the point of service because of their situation.
We had that, we had that in the health, we had that in the health insurance committee. We had, one of the things that was an option was that it's HMO only. Many of the school districts in the area are HMO only. There is no point of service option. We were able to maintain that point of service option this year. But here's, here's the big number two. By pegging to the HMO rate, in other words saying, "We will pay it at 88%, but only of the HMO rate, which is the lower premium rate," we can see a potential savings of $335,000 between the employees and the district because people will stop purchasing the expensive plan and they will go to the HMO plan because that's currently where they're doctoring anyway. So here's the potential savings.
Potential savings, assuming that 100% to harm.
Right. Martha, is this, 100, this was if 100% of people switched, but...
No.
No.
No. Since we put into place the plan that you just went over.
Well, for how many persons choosing HMO?
It doesn't matter because it's pegged off with the HMO premium.
No, it's the district and employees saving, so that would be everyone switching over.
But not everyone will.
But see, we're pegging at 88%.
Sure.
So our savings is going to be attained.
Our savings.
Our savings would be attained. The variable would be whether or not the employees choose. You know, and there was members of the committee that said, "I still choose to doctor outside of the Dean plan." And so the $120 for the right to go to, say, UW made sense to them. We had members of the group that were also high prescription drug users that said this becomes very problematic. But looking at a whole, when we had a discussion regarding, you know, it was critical for the group right out of the gate, they wanted to leave offices as the saying. It was, it's a $30 copay out of office, you know? Another way to change the insurance game is to off the office visit costs. And everybody said, "Oh, don't do that. This is probably the least disruptive."
Okay. So the employees are getting roughly a $40,000 benefit through this plan, savings through here. But they have, obviously, some employees, and again, I don't know what those numbers would be. We obviously heard about one of them tonight has some very high co-pays. But, you know, I know, my kids, they're uninsured, but they use very little at their age. But others will use more. And how is that going to impact those? What percentage of employees are really going to have costs going up significantly because of this?
And that's why, that's the caveat. You can personalize the discussion on health insurance.
Sure.
It's great to have that perspective, but you cannot craft a group plan to 355 individual units.
Yeah.
You should, you cannot.
Yeah.
So we looked at, what is the best plan we can get for the dollars that we have? What can we go out and buy and give us the best option?
Sean, did you get your question answered, Jack?
Yeah, well, I, I'm obviously making a point more than I am. But it's, again, I understand what Sean's saying too.
There's the commitment in year two for a max 5% increase, commitment year three max 5%. Do we have, are we, when we do make our own commitment to what plan we'll, we'll vote on, let's select, are we making a one-year commitment or are we making a longer, three years?
Let's say a three-year.
I think personally, as a board member, one vote out of five, it looks like, because the other two sit out. I would recommend taking this option. Anytime you can lock in healthcare costs at 5%, at 0.55, is very advantageous. And especially when these are like caps, there are things that could improve our position.
But that's our option, we'll have the option to choose one year or longer.
You can certainly, you can...
I'm just asking.
Yep.
Sean, could you go back to the slide of the percentages of utilization? Yeah. So I'm not a car guy, but is the appropriate metaphor, we have 76% of the people using a four-wheel drive or having a four-wheel drive vehicle, but never really utilizing that four-wheel because the two-wheel drive of the Dean HMO PPO plan, 81% of them are utilizing it anyway. So that is a very powerful statement, that already those people are covered, they're utilizing the plan, and the percentage of the 24% that are utilizing that higher deductible plan or that higher premium, that's a serious number as well. But it seems to me that the 20 that does the 80 is right there with the people who select a higher plan but are not utilizing it, or the utilization is within the Dean plan that, that the HMO provides, is a very powerful number.
Yeah. And that's, I guess that's, that's why the discussion came about of pegging to the, to the HMO rate. Because clearly, when it costs you $15 to be able to go anywhere anytime per month, that's a minimal investment. When doctoring outside of the Dean network is important to you, $120 a month is not a minimal investment. It's one of those, "Well, I already use Dean, so why would I need to pay $120 a month to someone else that I'm not going to?"
And I guess just something to reiterate, that was brought up last year during the discussion, is Dean covers everything except organ transplants and childhood cancer. So if that were to ever occur to somebody, Dean would refer them out of the network, but it would still be covered as HMO, correct Dean?
And we've had that. Yeah, and we've had those instances.
Yeah. I just also want to make a point that with the Affordable Care Act and the conversation that is happening nationally about the rising cost of healthcare and how to deal with them, is my hope that at some point, our educational systems can get out of the healthcare business. And that is another interesting conversation for our citizens to pay attention to.
Yeah. One question I have is on our wellness.
Yep.
And obviously Craig is doing, I think, a great job of organizing. Do we have to modify that program, up the game with the program with what we're doing now?
Here, I guess here's a, here's a couple that I guess to throw out. With the, with the wellness program, Dean is committed to building this collaboratively. They want to set some benchmarks and some goals, health risk assessments being one of them, but only one of them. Dean is willing to continue paying employees to take advantage of these opportunities. Dean is also looking at bringing in a nurse practitioner or nurse coordinator?
Nurse practitioner.
Nurse practitioner onsite as part of the wellness effort, as, working within the district, not full-time, not that was the day, but they're willing to commit staff resources to work on a regular basis with our employees on a variety of issues. And so that's even more skin in the game for them and will be very advantageous for our employees.
Was there, was there any discussion at the insurance committee level about the elimination of the point of service plan? Just eliminate the option altogether?
Well, to be honest with you, we, when we got to the 0%, the 0%, in order to get to the no increase in healthcare costs, this is what's required for a plan modification. This keeps our premiums set, okay? So there's two sides of this equation. This is the healthcare contract and this is a 0% increase by changing these numbers. The savings is from the district policy of pegging to the HMO rate. So there was, there was talk of what you can do to change these even more to drive the savings, but the committee got to that 0% increase and stopped. Clearly, you can modify any number, any way to look at potential savings, but we didn't do that to any large degree. We did take a look at a couple of options. One of them was the 10% co-insurance. It kind of mirrors what the state does. That actually turned out to be a 3.9% increase.
Or more?
It, it turned out to be more. So we said, "Well, that didn't work." So Dean ran four or five different scenarios for us. This is the one that seemed the most palatable to the group across the board.
Kevin, I think most of the people in the room didn't want to get rid of that point of service plan in the event somebody really wants to see UW docs. And Dean originally requested to just go to the HMO and do this three-year deal and we negotiated that out. But they wanted the pegging because we know it's going to drive most of the people to the HMO.
And I don't know how long...
Well, I mean, it's going to drive most of the people to the HMO who are already, in essence, using the HMO exclusively. So I think we want to be clear that we're not taking something away from people, we're simply saying, "You're not utilizing it and it would be to your advantage and to the district's advantage to continue what you're doing."
Yeah. We're overpaying for an underutilized benefit or an underutilized option. The point of service, you know, like Dan mentioned, the committee was quite concerned about just dropping that this year because people are already under care. They have to understand that, you know, it just can't go away one day. And I want to say that this puts people on notice, but this identifies the conversation that was had, that the point of service, and it separates it out as far as costing goes. And it also, it also shows that the premiums aren't subject to the rate caps because they can't control them. So people start to understand the cost side of the point of service. Personally, they start to understand that. And, you know, we'll just look at the utilization and how that impacts rates next year.
Can you address kids that are away at college or retirees who...
Yeah. Dean has a PPO wrap that they have that allows those individuals to access those networks when they're residing outside of the service area. So if you have a retiree who moves to Florida, Arizona, multi-plan is a PPO that they can take advantage of, and those will be the HMO rates, not the point of service rates.
Same with kids at school, if they're...
They have a, they have a way of covering those in network and students are away at school, so.
If you're on an HMO low and just traveling for a week on spring break, you still can go to an emergency room if something happens and you'll still be covered as you would on the regular HMO plan even though you're out of network. They'll just try and get you back here as quickly as possible.
Yeah, you have to follow them.
Continue care. But you're covered in the case in the emergency.
Well, I appreciate all the effort that went into it. Obviously, the heavy load was not done by the rest of the board that's sitting at the table. So I appreciate everybody that sat around the table. Gives us an opportunity to chew on this for a bit. I'm sure it's not a perfect plan and that, you know, it's been expressed in personal ways, that there definitely is an impact to a number of people for any change, whatever that change might be. But in the larger picture, you know, the district has some decisions to make from a cost standpoint, and I'm, I'm just glad that the conversation tonight, we got to this point tonight, not by the board or the board and administrator sitting around and trying to decide what the final is. The fact that you had a committee, that was a fairly new revelation for the district to collaboratively come up with some solutions, which, you know, everybody that was sitting at that table, with the exception of Mr. McDevon, had a vested financial interest in the outcome. So to me, it says a lot that there was a consensus that was reached that this is something that's workable, although it's not ideal. So I appreciate your leadership in having the conversation move forward.
I'd like to either post this PowerPoint on our website or send it out to staff that aren't here tonight so they can get a sense of what was discussed here tonight and maybe, you know, invite them to contact Martha, maybe with any specific questions they have so that we can get those answers back out to people.
I would send it to retired retirees as well since they'll be affected.
You actually might want to start an FAQ page on it because maybe people will have the same questions.
Some of the questions that were asked.
A little bit on the timing. Got a couple of weeks to kind of chew over, get some feedback, see what you hear. Board will be asked to make a decision on health insurance at the next board meeting as far as recommending that plan or, or not. And then after that, we've got a pretty short timetable for employees to choose because they'll have to choose the HMO or the PPO option. And they'll have to make that selection and we'll have to get it in writing because then payroll has to get adjusted and Dean's got to do all their things with deductibles and carryovers and things like that. So there's, while it, it's not a wholesale conversion, there's a lot of administrative work that's got to get done in short order, so to speak, right Craig?
Exactly. Look, it certainly would be advisable as a part of the, to add to the PowerPoint kind of a mock-up, you know, "What does this look like for me? What does this look like for my family? You know, if I'm in the Dean network anyway, if I'm one of those 76%, how does that affect me going on? If I'm not, how does it affect me?" I think we need to try to be as transparent as possible in giving some, some examples of how this transition would affect us.
I think I have most of those marked up for you guys.
Yeah. That would be real helpful and people can see. But I think that big number is, is a very important number for individuals to recognize both they and, and the district are paying for something that's not being utilized and nothing is being taken away from 76% of those people, or 81% of the 76% if I got the numbers That should be a pretty easy no-brainer to help move forward.
Yeah. And like, like Dan mentioned, you know, Dean proposed this and they wanted to eliminate the point of service plan. And, you know, we didn't say no, Dan said no. And said, you know, "Look, that's, that's not something you can do right now." But clearly, the pegging to the HMO rate helps the education process, helps people differentiate between the two plans, not only the benefit of the plan, but the cost of the plan by personalizing it.
I think what Doug had mentioned is also a concern. We want the people who will take the point of service plan and therefore essentially carry a heavier burden financially on their end if the district is pegging it to the HMO rate, you know, what that reality is and what, what options there might be to help ameliorate that somehow. You know, what that reality is and what options there might be to help ameliorate that somehow.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
There are going to be a percentage of people who, at least, if I heard correctly, are having providers currently that are outside of the Dean network that they have to have. And there's going to be a differential financially between what the district has been paying.
No, I think I get the reality of it. I'm not sure what I'm gathering from one of your potential solutions. Maybe that's what I missed.
I'm just posing that out there, that I don't think we should simply say, well, that's not our problem. I mean, think outside the box. I don't know. We'll look at the numbers of people that are impacted. And we have flexibility for how to manage, how to manage potentially something that as the utilization of these drugs that this person wrote about impacted. Maybe there's a way to deal with it to be helpful in one way or another.
I think one thing we can continue to do as a district, which we definitely started on last year, was educating employees about the Flex Benefit Plan. I would say our usage is not that high right now. And that would be a way to give people a little bit of tax benefit.
What's the percentage of people that are utilizing that?
I can get back to you on that. I know it's increased a little bit since last year because we did some education on it last year, but it's still, I don't think it's at a very high percentage.
And Craig, didn't we also implement some kind of a bank?
A sick leave bank?
A sick leave bank and other ways in which our community stands together and says, I'm going to get a benefit, but a portion of that benefit I want to donate to share to those who may not be able to receive that benefit. That's all that I'm suggesting as we give some thought to.
Well, Martha, are you bringing up something that, again, I think is another thing that we can add into the pot and start saying, okay, we're not, some people aren't utilizing the percentages even though they're there. And the same thing, they're not utilizing that. And look, if you do utilize this, you can give out at least an average scenario. And saying, this is the average scenario savings that will result with the usage of the cafeteria plan. And so that they can realize that, you know, even though there is some additional cost, or this is a cost that's coming out of my pocket by utilizing this, I could certainly realize a significant savings, too.
Any further discussion? We will have it on our agenda for our next board meeting. So, I guess I would encourage any board members, if questions come up that weren't addressed tonight, to have those questions presented and given at least so that we come to the board meeting next week. For the next board meeting, we can be fully versed on what it is that our options are. Had having been said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to the agenda, those in favor.
Bye.